The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer of 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Ely City Council Meeting, June 10th, 2021.
So come back for some of that, because we have to miss it then.
So actually, I'm here, I'm in town. I was having a thought about the kids time market. I'm still in town.
Well, I see, but you're still hitting tennis balls?
Yeah, actually, that is even a good one. Because I have my little machine, so it repeats me and I hit it. Because I can hit anything.
Yeah. Yeah, there's not a pool, like a large pool, I have his players here. Well, it's like the same thing when I taught back in the top up there, every tale.
I'll speak in order, if you'll join me in the place.
That's nice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an invitation from the Capitol? There you go. Let us pray. Dear Ely Father, we are so thankful for our town of Ely, for the privilege of living and working here. I pray, Lord, that you bless those in this town, bless the mayor and the city council members, all those who are here to do this work for the city today. Lord, I pray that you help them to understand the needs of this city and to be able to have the wisdom to help all of that be accomplished. We thank you, Lord, for the ability to be a part of that. I pray that you give them confidence in their work, that you help them to see ways they can work together when they come from different viewpoints. Pray, Lord, for your wisdom and help. We thank you, Lord, that we can turn to you through all of that. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We'll have the low call.
Mayor Robertson.
Present.
Councilman Plankis.
Present.
Councilman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Alford.
Here.
Councilman Leach, here. Councilman Spear is absent tonight. City Clerk Lee, here. City Treasurer, A. Trevor of the Trust, here. City Attorney, Emily.
There.
Public Works Supervisor, Craig Craft.
Yes.
City Building Official, Walker.
Here.
City Engineer, Alber.
Here.
City Police Chief, Henry.
Here.
City Fire Chief, Stork.
Here.
And that's all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item two, public comment. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Fredrick Pate. I'm the Senior Environment Manager for Robinson Mines. We have a project in Lane City, and I want to talk to the general public about it, and I want to start with the city council. I hope I can do that within three minutes. So, as we go towards the mine, we all know Lane City on Highway 50. Right by where the school is, the white building, around that area north of Highway 50, we are planning to drill eight exploration holes. As the public drive by, they will see the drill rigs, and instead of people coming out with stories that we want to destroy Lane City, we want to take away the building and everything, we want to make sure we tell our own story before people start telling stories for us. So in the past, exploration has been done there, and they've identified sign mineralizations that show signs that there is a possibility that there is ore in that area. In fact, if you drive around that area, you see a couple of underground mines that were explored probably in the 50s, and we are interested in going to explore that. So at the beginning, we are targeting eight holes. There will be four that, when people drive past it, they will see. There will be four that is at the backside of the hill that people will not see. These eight holes will vary between 700 feet to 1,350 feet deep. Now, this is the first step. There's going to be a huge gap between them. Now, once these holes are drilled, if it proves to show that there is really mineralization there, we need to come in and we need to fill it up, we need to do more exploration, we have to work with BLM for permits to be able, so that we are far away from ever getting close to having a mine in that area. But, like I said from the beginning, instead of people seeing the drill rigs and telling stories about it, I want to make sure that I tell the story myself. So this is the beginning, and it will take years for us to ever get to a place of mining in that area if really there is mineralization in that area. In all, there will be a total of 8,550 feet deep of core drilling that is going to occur in the area. All the area that will be drilled, I want to make it clear, it's owned by Robinson. This is a private patented land. There are areas within there that belongs to BLM. We are not stepping on any of the BLM land. All this land is owned by Robinson. One of the things we've done with BLM, even though there is, that land is private, we have a programmatic agreement with it.
Fredrick, those are your, those are your three minutes.
Okay.
If you'd like an opportunity, though, to address this to the council, we can certainly put you on the agenda.
Okay.
It's definitely an interesting project, and we appreciate you coming to the public with that.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Mayor Robertson.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson and Jennifer Lee, City Clerk, I'm coming to you in your official capacities to address a health issue that's been created along the Crawford Street neighborhood in central Ely. Mosquito invasion has made our living conditions uncomfortable, unhealthy, and possibly dangerous. A large body of stagnant water and horses on that same property appear to provide a breeding ground for the infestation. This should be addressed immediately before we have to deal with a West Nile or Zika virus outbreak. We have family members living in that area and several tenants along with their children. Families and friends cannot enjoy being outside because of this mosquito threat. This situation should never have been allowed to evolve to the point where we find our health and welfare threatened. You can refer to City Ordinance, Chapter 3, Animal Control, Article A, Livestock and Fowl, Section 5381A, Keeping of Regulated Quote Relating to Unhelpful and Unattended Animal Hazards, as well as the Keeping of Farm Animals Within Ely City Limits. I am hopeful that we can address this issue here, but will file a hazard notice with appropriate state health agencies, at least dangers to health and life and animal living. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Please read this letter in the public record when this is read. Counsel with regards, Johnny Chatches.
Could I respond to the animals on Crawford Street, please? To my knowledge, those are in the county. I don't think that's a city issue. Any other public comment?
In regards to that issue, you may want to check to see where the city found the mines. They need to go back another 100 feet. Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, when your 10th item may be a year to consider approval of, oops, no answer on that, Mayor. I almost screwed up. Mr. Mayor, the payment notice for my property at 692 Altman has been taken care of. The notice for 710 Avenue G asking for a 90-day extension. The contractors have not gotten back to me. They're too busy. Let's see. After your last city council meeting held on May 27, 2021, I told Lee Walker, your building inspector, my troubles getting a contractor, and asked him if I could just hire a handyman to take care of the problem. I would remove the black fiber board that has suffered some damage and put up a replacement panel. Community choir was allowed to do a temporary fix on their building located on Main Street, downtown Altman, without a permit or licensed contractor, just a group of people, not necessarily a handyman. I'm asking for the same consideration. Lee has not gotten back to me since then. I realize he's busy, but so am I. I need some kind of consideration. Mr. Mayor, the access to my property and to my brother's lot located on Great Basin Boulevard next to Washington Federal Bank has been taken out and not put back in. Straight back, L-shaped curving gutter was installed with no, which now gets off access to each lot. Sewer access for both lots is located on the Westmost Lot, closest to Washington Federal, not in front of each lot like you have on other installations throughout the city. I gave you a picture then, Mr. Mayor. If I go from the upper lot to the lower, I got to access 35, 40 feet. If my brother sells his lot, I got to tell the neighbor I may have to cut in at his access, which may be a new driveway asphalt. No, I want the same consideration as others. I want my access put back. I started this process over a month ago. They told me no problem. So this last week, we got a problem because they poured it straight back. I want access to my property. I checked with Basin, I checked with Regina with the State Highway, I checked with Steve Bear, the local district engineer. Don't worry. Well, we're worried. Needs to be taken care of. Mr. Mayor, the council's targeting cleanup in areas that don't need attention as bad as Altman. There, weeds growing on lots, which are now drying out. Weeds growing in the sidewalk, dirt in the gutters. Red and yellow zones need to be painted. You have sagebrush growing in the sidewalk areas, some four feet high or more, located with one to two blocks of Main Street. Streetlights that are out need to be repaired. Some were reported two years ago, are still up. The red, garden rail that was removed from around the Murray Creek overflow ditch located in Veterans Park near the gazebo, barbecue stands, and new Veterans Park sign needs to be replaced. You have a dropping hazard with someone who could suffer a broken hip or other injury. You're going to have larger crowds in that area.
Thank you for the, that's three minutes.
You need to address that, Mayor.
Thank you.
I need some answers also.
Any other public comment? Hearing and saying none, we'll move on to item three, Mayor, discussion for possible action, approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. Oh, here came a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, four zero. Item four, City Department reports. We'll start with the fire chief.
Non-ordered report, listen to the question.
Any questions for the fire chief? Okay. Thank you. Police chief.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Municipal Court judge?
See on the, call it in.
Okay. City attorney?
Nothing, Judge.
Okay. You have one, for these ones, when you're back there. City clerk?
On the CDVG application, Ely does not have the low to moderate income percentage that's needed to apply, so you would need to look at specific areas from low to moderate to do an income survey, depending on your project. So if you have specific areas where you would like projects to happen, if you can be, like DJ know or myself, and the public hearing will start next month. On the quarter group, I produced some letters from the Robinson's sign, so we could, or excuse me, so we could use it now, to get those submitted. I posted business last Friday, those were plant sensitive, and I also did some research fourth quarter on the American Rescue Plan capital projects line. Tuesday, I obtained a public works number from the Department of Terminating Labor, the National Security Committee, this was submitted by the RCC. And on the complaint side, I spoke to at least one property owner daily on these payment notices. We did receive information from the San Diego Landscape Coalition and Tri-Wee, Tri-County Wee, that they're offering $600 grants to homeowners for weed treatment, and Tri-County applied a nice program. Now, people know, we've got posters on the website and all the ads, and there's questions.
Okay. Any questions for the clerk? City clerk? Okay. City Public Works Supervisor?
I just wanted to let the council know that, excuse me, Marv Gonzalez, an associate at the wastewater treatment plant, was awarded operator of the year from the Nevada Water Association, so good and great asset to cities.
Thank you. Please pass our congratulations on. City water operator, you have their report, city engineer.
We also assist what Jennifer just talked about, the quarter group. They had some stuff that needed to get in time sensitive last Friday, so they didn't get it into the Senate, so that's hopefully a good thing. We got a meeting, I think we got a Zoom meeting scheduled with them to discuss these projects that we turned in, not this week, but the following week. We'll get that taken care of. We're working now with, most of our major improvements are completed for our Altman Street project that we were doing. Now, we're coordinating with the contractor as he brings his storm drain system up through centrally down to there. And so, we moved everything out of the way, but the thing that didn't get moved out of the way is the stuff for their trench box, and so there's some modifications here going on to work their trench box, so they continue to work in that area. The other thing is our Murray Street project, our sewer project, it's getting close to being wrapped up. It's about 50 feet left, a manhole and two services or whatever, so hopefully in another couple of days, this thing should be hopefully wrapped up behind us. I think that's the major things for me. I am going to be gone next week, just letting everybody know, but I will be back midweek of the following week, so, but we still have people in the office who need you. Thank you, guys. And if it's okay, I'll sneak out tonight, because I'm scrambling to get the stuff going.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
City Building Inspector?
I'd just like to report that I am going to schedule my B1 residential inspector exam for the 18th, so if any, other than that, that's all I have to report.
Okay. Any questions for the local court?
Good luck.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item five, and I'll turn that over to Mayor Robinson Leach.
We'll have any other questions, of course. Good afternoon, everyone. We are really busy, and we bounced back from 2020, so we're really happy about that. The big news is, work is continuing on Locomotive 81. It should be operating by midsummer. We just did a fundraising for Locomotive 81 called Get It Done 81. We were looking to raise $166,000, and we clocked in at $209,000, so we have a lot of support out there. In May, we carried 1,633 passengers, and that is actually a 5% increase over 2019, and 2019 was a very good year for us. To date, we've carried 2,752 passengers, and that's a 1% increase over 2019. Other than that, that's all I have, unless someone has some questions. All right. Thank you. Good job. Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, reports. City council, we'll start with Councilman Leach.
Uh, Leach.
Councilman Alford.
Good luck, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Carson.
No, thank you.
Captain Plankis. You have my report there. I would like to mention that I did get a letter from the University of Enid Reno stating that our city clerk, Jennifer Lee, has completed her Certified Public Officials Program. I'm really excited that she did that. Says, "We hope she will display her certificate with great pride and with a true sense of accomplishment. The time spent taking these courses represents a significant commitment to her field. Her dedication to this program is to be commended and recognized. We wish her continued success with her career and hope we have provided her with an educational experience that was rewarding and will be beneficial to her professional development." And that is from the Assistant Director of Workforce Development at UMR, so.
Good. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Just get that certificate framed in your office.
I'd also like to report that on the complaint regarding the skills and livestock, that those were turned over to the appropriate state and county departments for review, and the letter will be going out to Mr. John Chatches. It'll be going out tomorrow, so. And with that, we'll move on to item seven, items for discussion of possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the Municipal Utility Board. Item one, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, approval to waive commercial fees to deposit metal at City Landfill, June 12, 2021, through June 20, 2021, to encourage commercial property owners to clean up their property.
So we did this last year, and it did, it was successful. Utility Board did recommend approval, and I had an interesting question from a member of Durwich. He asked why we charge commercial prices for metal. I didn't have a good answer, and I still really don't. I did some calling around today, so that's something I'll be digging into this month and maybe come back with a better answer, or have a decent conversation of what needs to happen there.
Would it be possible to extend that to June 30?
I don't see why not.
Once the word gets out, I think we'd see it's even more successful than last year.
Sure, sure, we can do that. Is that your motion?
That's my motion to approve it by extending to June 30, to encourage commercial property owners to clean up their property.
We have a motion from Councilman Alford. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Carson. Any further discussion? I would just like to add that I think this would be a good thing to do every year. I know it's kind of hard to get the word out, and if it was a regular thing, even if it was just every other year, they knew it was coming up, but.
Maybe even just all of June, you know? Maybe June is just a month. Do that.
And, you know, there could be a conversation of, do we really want to charge a dollar?
And I think that's a good question.
Cycling, if we can make money out of cycling, or break even at it, so, yeah. I'll take it with that a little deeper.
We have a motion in a second, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this whole word. Item two, Board Member, City Clerk Lee, discussion for possible action, approval to remove pass-through utility fee penalties up to the amount of $7,929.66 due to landfill fee balance and lien fee being paid in full from 25 East 7th North in Lynn, Nevada, as requested property owners, the Anna Erickson. This looks like it was approved by the Utility Board.
Yep.
Mr. Shepherd?
Motion to approve, Councilman Leach. Do I have a second?
Close circuit.
Second from Councilman Alford. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, four zero. Item three, Board Member, City Clerk Lee, discussion for possible action, approval to remove landfill fees and penalties in the amount of $1,920.64 from 89 West for South Lynn, Nevada, to White County County Assessor's Designation of this service address as a non-revival structure since October 2017, and/or to remove pass-through utility fee penalties up to the amount of $481.43 due to the lien fee and landfill fee balance approved prior to October 2017 being paid in full, and this also looks like some version of it was approved.
It was, yes.
Well, they have an and over on here, was it one or the other?
It was the old.
It was the old, yeah.
I would vote to approve that.
Motion to approve, Councilman Leach. Do I have a second? I'll second. Second from Councilman Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this whole word. With that, we move on to item eight, items for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council. We can send an agenda. We have minutes for May 13, and bills for May 27. I'm going to take a motion for both, or any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve both, you may attend the bills.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Leach. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Let's see, we'll move on to deal business. Councilman Spear, discussion for possible action, approval of grant priority list for City Ely's American Rescue Plan funding. We have the list in your packet, kind of what was worked up last meeting. I would like to report, too, that I did have a citizen approach me with their interest in providing $500 to start an incentive program, or something for vaccinations, whether that was a prize or whatever. I quickly realized I was trying to organize this and reached out to White County Main Street, as they use a lot of our business promotion and stuff here locally, and they do a lot of work with us on that, with the city officials and other advertising and publicity, and that's all I have to report on that, since we built the grant.
Since Ed and I are, I'd like to comment on this. I talked to the treasurer this morning, but this time we still haven't received the funding, so we can't call around the still a little, because we know to you are going to be, you know, June 11th is tomorrow, or July 1. So those ideas that were thrown out, that was in the package, they're still ideas, there were the two new ones added, you know, the incentive thing, and also the other consideration for some nonprofit organizations. Again, I don't know how we can really discuss this, not knowing the dollar amount or the rules. So we'd like to push it off to the next month. I mean, we still need suggestions and ideas that are coming in, like you just mentioned. I think it'd just be premature to discuss it.
Yeah, I think a motion to table is entirely appropriate on this.
I think also, though, a good addition to this list, probably right up with the railroad, would be the horse races. We did have public comment last meeting about the shortfall because of not being able to have the races last year. Those are a huge draw to our community, so we need to make sure that those are, those are properly counted as well. So I would like to see that added to the list, please.
And I would also like to see magic cart added to the list, too.
Yes, that's a good question.
So I guess we just table this and keep kind of working on the list of cart races as we go along with that. Is that okay to do, Jane? We are just be adding to the list without approving any kind of table?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other discussion on that item? Is that a motion to table, Jim?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Mayor. Please table till.
Do I have a second for table?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Leach. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be back for the next meeting. Two, Councilmember, City Treasurer, discuss for possible action, approval of collective bargaining agreement between stability and operating engineers, Local 3, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, or determination of requested modifications.
Did, there was a question last, last two weeks ago about the certifications for that? No. Water, sewer. Is that required? Did we get those answered?
I did find the job description, and it's in the job description saying that they, I wasn't worried, have the required or have the ability to get a class three, D3. Does it get any time limits? Doesn't absolutely say they have to. I mean, it was kind of big, so, once again.
Suppose it's kind of inclined if it's.
What's that?
If they have to have, they either have to have it or the ability to get it.
The ability. So, once again, I'm stressing, these job descriptions need to be updated.
Sure.
So.
So, in kicking it around, we kind of, is my idea to go through the job descriptions, obviously. Address the job descriptions in gray area, you know, whatever you want to do there. For now, it is my recommendation to go ahead and give the 5% rate across the board, and then for the meatmen, hold that dollar back till we redo the job description and come up with a fair price, whatever that may be.
Hold the dollar back for the certifications.
Yeah, if we have a plan of what needs to take place. That is my recommendation.
Would that plan be able then to say in three months, if we come up with something in the union agreement, we implement it at that time in three months, and then go through a whole year?
It's going to take us a while to get through all these.
Okay, I just grabbed a month.
Yeah, I would just say again, next year's, because the way the union agreement stands now, wages are the only thing that we would open for discussion for the next two years after this one. So what he's saying is then the committee has to go back to the union and go back into negotiations to withdraw the dollar extra, and just say 5% across the board, and see if they agree with it. It just basically puts us back into negotiations, and nothing's totally solved.
Procedural thing, then, that'd be fine.
Yes.
So that would just pipe off.
Okay. Do we have any final motion?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have? Do I have a?
Second circuit.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? And so just to be clear for the record, we're doing 5% across the board until job descriptions.
Go back and offer it to the union.
Right, right. That's what's being offered.